Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. It is six o'clock PM on Tuesday, March the fourteenth, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone here in our city council audience, as well as our listening audience at WCBU. I'd also like to welcome the audience watching by cable channel twenty-two. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the roll. Ali. Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Member Grab. Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Present.
And Councilmember Velpula.
Present.
We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Everyone, please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk? We are at proclamations. We have two proclamations today. The first proclamation recognizes Women's History Month and is presented by the city of Peoria. Whereas March is a significant month to honor and acknowledge the accomplishments of women. In nineteen eighty-seven, Congress declared the month of March as Women's History Month, and March eighth is recognized as International Women's Day, a global day that celebrates the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women. And whereas fifty-one percent of our community members are women, and these women have played and continue to play critical, economic, cultural, philanthropic, and social roles in the creation and ongoing development of our city. And whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing their rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation, excuse me, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, and the civil rights movement. And whereas Peoria has had its share of native daughters, who have gone into the world to make their marks in academia, entertainment, politics, sports, and business, including Annie Minerva Turnbull Malone, who spent her teenage years in Peoria and is considered to be one of the first African-American female millionaires. In addition to founding Torrell College, she made her fortune creating a successful business focusing on cosmetics and hair care products. And whereas Women's History Month honors women of every race, status, and ethnicity, who have worked to establish an equal role for women, ensuring the appreciation and value of equitable labor for future generations. Now therefore, I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, and on behalf of the Peoria City Council, do hereby acknowledge the month of March as Women's History Month in Peoria, Illinois. Our next proclamation recognizes Parkinson's Awareness Month, and joining us are Roger Helene, Barbara Helene, and the companion dog from Paul's, Ollie, giving independence. Can you join us in the front? At the podium? That would be great. And where's Ollie? Okay. Hello, Ollie. Thank you. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive disorder of the nervous system that affects movement for which there is currently no cure. And whereas one million people in the United States are currently living with Parkinson's disease, an additional fifty thousand to sixty thousand new cases are diagnosed each year, making Parkinson's disease the fourteenth-leading cause of death in the United States, according to the Centers for Disease Control. And whereas every day, through research, patient and family services and education, the American Parkinson's Disease Association provides the support, education, and research that help everyone impacted by Parkinson's disease to live life to the fullest. And whereas increased efforts and awareness are desperately needed to help expedite the research efforts into better treatments, medications, and ultimately a cure, to help those impacted by Parkinson's disease live full life until a cure is found. Whereas the world, the nation, and the state of Illinois observe Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in April, 2023. And whereas the state of Illinois recognizes the efforts of the Central Illinois Parkinson's Support Group to raise funds and promote awareness to fight Parkinson's disease, thereby improving the quality of life for those living with the disease." Now therefore, I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize April, 2023, as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in Peoria. Mr. Helene?
Thank you, Mayor Ali, Councilwomen and Councilmen. Unfortunately, I have stood here for a number of years before you. The story's always been the same. The story's changed a little this year. Where we used to say, one person was diagnosed every nine minutes. One person is now diagnosed every six minutes with Parkinson's. Where we used to say the average age of diagnosis was sixty-five plus. The average age of diagnosis is now fifty-nine. So you can see that we're losing the battle, unfortunately. But it's because of awareness and things like this that we can bring more awareness to the disease and to the effects of it. Those that remember me before, we talked about fifty-two billion dollars a year that it costs in both medical and caregiving. That's now up to about sixty-four billion dollars a year. So we do need to raise awareness. We need to help raise some funds for research through the various organizations. And it's with the help, these proclamations that I've gotten, I think, probably ten or twelve at least from the city. I always hope it's my last one. Not that I don't like coming down here and meeting with you, but people like my wife, she hasn't been here for the last couple of years. She was able to make it tonight, so they're always hoping for a cure, along with the other million-plus people that are out there. So on behalf of my wife and the Parkinson's community of Central Illinois, I thank all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. We thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Helene, and we thank you, Ollie, for your leadership and for your advocacy. Madam Clerk? We are at approval of the minutes. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I move to approve the minutes of the city council meeting held on February twenty-eighth, 2023, as printed.
Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk? We have two town items. Item number twenty-three dash zero-six-five, a request to approve the February 2023 actual expenditures and to approve the March 2023 anticipated expenditures for the town of the city of Peoria. Councilmember Grab?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the expenditures as outlined for both February and March.
Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk? Item number twenty-three dash zero-six-six, a communication with the request to approve the agenda for the annual town meeting. Councilmember Grab?
Mayor Ali, I move to approve the agenda for the annual town meeting.
Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk? We are at consent agenda items. Item number twenty-three dash zero-six-seven, a communication with the request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency. Item number twenty-three dash zero-six-eight, a communication with the request to approve the low bid and award a contract to R.A. Cullen and the Sun for the Gale Avenue Mill and Overlay Project in the amount of one million, forty-six thousand, ninety-five dollars and forty cents, with an additional authorization of one hundred and four thousand, six hundred and four dollars and sixty cents for contingencies, for a total amount of one million, one hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred dollars. Item number twenty-three dash zero-six-nine, a communication with the request to approve an award contracts for the 2023 City of Peoria and Peoria County trustee vacant lot mowing program in the amount not to exceed five hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. Twenty-three dash zero-seven-zero, a communication with the request to approve an award contracts for the 2023 Facilities Boulevards and Right-Away Mowing Program in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars. Twenty-three dash zero-seven-one, a communication with the request to approve a contract for the landscape stewardship and maintenance project with JIMAX Landscape in the amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand, including up to a hundred and twenty thousand for labor and equipment and up to thirty thousand for materials. Twenty-three dash zero-seven-two, a communication with the request to approve the sole source purchase from Traffic Control Corporation and Econolite Traffic Cabinets in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars, and this requires two-thirds vote of councilmembers voting. Twenty-three dash zero-seven-three, a communication with the request for the following. A, approve the low bid from Autobomb Company in the amount of one million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, and approve a contract for the Native Plants and Accessible Interest Project at the Public Works Facility with an additional authorization of one hundred and thirty-two thousand for contingencies, for a contract award of one million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand. And B, adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three revised annual budget to allocate six hundred and forty thousand from the Stormwater Utility Fund balance for the Native Plants and Accessible Interest Project at the Public Works Facility. This requires two-thirds vote of corporate authorities. Twenty-three dash zero-seven-four, a communication with the request to approve a sole source agreement with Flock Safety for an additional forty-three license plate recognition cameras. This requires two-thirds vote of the councilmembers voting. Item number twenty-three dash zero-seven-five, a communication with the request to approve a professional service agreement to study the establishment of the proposed Galena Road Industrial Park Tax Increment Financing District with Jacob and Klein and the Economic Development Group in the amount of thirty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy, plus reimbursable costs. Item number twenty-three dash zero-seven-six, a communication with the request to approve a professional service agreement with Jacob and Klein and the Economic Development Group to study the establishment of the Southwest Washington Street Industrial Tax Increment Financing District in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred, plus reimbursable costs. Item number twenty-three dash zero-seven-seven, appointments to the Advisory Committee on Police and Community Relations with the request to concur, Kelly Peterson, Alexandra Fosberg, and Brock DeGud. Item number twenty-three dash zero-seven-eight, an appointment to the CDBG Public Service Advisory Commission with the request to concur Pamela A. Schubach. Item number twenty-three dash zero-seven-nine, an appointment to the Housing Commission with the request to concur, Bree Neubauer. Item number twenty-three zero-eight-zero, an appointment to the Public Arts Advisory Commission with the request to concur, May Gittleland Wright. Item number twenty-three dash zero-eight-one, an appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission with the request to concur, Reagan Leslie Hill. Item number twenty-three dash zero-eight-two, an appointment to the Transportation Commission with the request to concur Patricia Morrison-Dennis. Item number twenty-three dash zero-eight-three, a communication with the request to receive and file for the month ended January thirty-first, 2023, an audited financial report. That concludes the consent agenda items. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there items to remove from consent? Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you to remove item twenty-three dash zero-seven-two, twenty-three dash zero-seven-three, and twenty-three dash zero-seven-four. All of those items require a two-thirds or supermajority vote from the council, so I'd like for them to be voted separate from consent. Are there any other items to move, to remove? Hearing none? Madam Clerk? Oh, Councilmember Seer?
Move to approve.
Okay, item?
All of them.
I think we have to take one at a time, right? Sorry, the consent agenda. Thank you very much. Thank you. Move by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal, and this is a move to approve the remaining consent agenda items. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Councilman Seer. Madam Clerk? Item number twenty-three dash zero-seven-two, a communication with the request to approve the sole source purchase from Traffic Control Corporation for Econolite Traffic Cabinets in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Can I get a motion to approve? Move by Councilmember Rigenbach, seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk? Item number twenty-three dash zero-seven-three, a communication with the request for the following. A, approve the low bid from Autobomb Company in the amount of one million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, and approve a contract for the Native Plants and Accessible Interest Project at the Public Works Facility with an additional authorization of one hundred and thirty-two thousand for contingencies, for a total contract award of one million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand. And B, adopt an ordinance amending the city of the Peoria twenty-twenty-three revised annual budget to allocate six hundred and forty thousand from the Stormwater Utility Fund balance for the Native Plants and Accessible Interest Project at the Public Works Facility. Councilmember Grab?
Mayor, I move to approve A as outlined.
Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Any discussion? Cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Grab?
Mayor, I move to approve B, the ordinance as outlined.
Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk? Item number twenty-three dash zero-seven-four, a communication with the request to approve a sole source agreement with Flock Safety Incorporated for an additional forty-three license plate recognition cameras. Councilmember Jensen?
I move to approve.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk? We are now at a presentation. Item number twenty-three dash zero-eight-four, a communication with the request to receive and file a presentation regarding the broadband and digital equity initiative from the Illinois Office of Broadband. Okay. That says me, doesn't it? Okay. Thank you. We have been in communication with the Illinois Office of Broadband. The, there's been a team. The city manager's been involved, the assistant city manager, Director Joe Doolin from Community Development, and members of a team of the Illinois Office of Broadband. And we've had some very good discussion about how they're gonna, their plan to roll out broadband throughout the state of Illinois. So we thought it was very important to bring this presentation to city council and also allow the public to hear what's going on. So welcome, if you would please introduce yourselves and go right ahead into your presentation. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and councilmembers and community members as well. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Alicia Ross. I am with the Office of Illinois Broadband, Illinois Broadband Lab.
And members of city council. My name is Greg Claus. I'm the federal program officer with NTIA, which is the National Telecommunication and Information Administration with the U.S. Department of Commerce. And we're here today to talk about high-speed internet, also called broadband. So as part of the bipartisan infrastructure law that passed Congress in November of 2021, there's a ton of money in there for a lot of roads, bridges, highways. But there's also sixty-five billion dollars that Congress passed to support high-speed internet access, broadband. This funding goes through NTIA. You can consider it U.S. Department of Commerce for short. And it goes through two major programs we'll talk about today. First is BEAD, which is the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program. There's forty-two billion dollars. And you could think of this as the infrastructure of the internet. This is building the fiber, putting it in the ground or on the poles, installing fixed wireless, you know, the devices, getting people the tech and the actual internet so that they can benefit from all of the things you can do online. Then the Digital Equity Act, this is the program that helps with all of the other things of access. So having the adoption. So it's one thing to have the internet connected to your home, but it means nothing if you don't actually have a subscription and you're not subscribing to it every month and it's affordable. If you don't have a device, you don't have a computer or a laptop or a cellphone to connect to the internet and use it. And also, you need to have the skills, the knowledge and skills to support, you know, tech help. If my mom texts me, and how do I do this? Or how do I enlarge the size of text on my phone? All of those things are essential as we're talking about getting people connected and closing the digital divide. So briefly, and I'll pass over to my colleague with the state who's working on implementing all of this exciting stuff. Our funding goes from the federal government to the state government, which then they're developing a plan. Right now, they're in the planning phase. They have five million dollars to look at the needs. What are the problem areas with infrastructure access? Who currently has internet access, who doesn't? What's sufficient speed? What's the affordability situation look like? And they're asking the public to weigh in on this process and submit information that they'll roll up into a report and then use that for the basis of how they're going to administer their program for the next five years. When we're talking about how much funding the state of Illinois is going to receive, this slide just tells you there is a formula that Congress developed. It has not been processed yet. Right now, it's going to be run on June thirtieth of this year, so in a couple of months. But it's estimated that Illinois will receive around six hundred million dollars to one point two billion dollars. So it's a lot of funding, and it's a once-in-a-generation opportunity to close the digital divide and connect all those who are unserved. And that's defined by law as anyone who has less than twenty-five megabits download and three upload, and underserved. That's anything less than a hundred megabits download by twenty upload. So if you're looking at your internet bill, minimum standards are a hundred by twenty, by the law. And that's what the state's going to do, is they're going to first prioritize anyone who is in that unserved category and make sure they're connected. Then they're going to look at the underserved category. And if there's funding left over, they're going to work on connecting community anchor institutions, think of schools, libraries, hospitals, with one gigabit service. So one gigabit down, download speed. Any of the recipients of our program, so any of the sub-grantees the state will award to, they have to have an affordability component that's essential, and that includes a low-cost option. You can think of the affordability connection program that the FCC runs, which provides a thirty-dollar monthly benefit. That's a really good example that the state can choose when they're finalizing their plan to follow through and apply for Illinois' program. And a big component of the local coordination, public engagement, I mentioned, is it has to be all over the state, which is why we're here today. We're talking to every corner of the state to make sure not just elected officials, but also residents and businesses are aware of the programs and are engaged in sharing their opinions on what they would like for solutions. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Alicia.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. And again, thank you for having us here. As Greg mentioned, we, the state, we have been aggressively meeting with local government agencies, council members, as well as making plans to have listening sessions with community members, residents, to find out what the needs are in each town, each community, both whether it is for digital literacy, whether it's technology, and then of course, overall broadband. So the Office of Broadband is housed at the Department of Commerce and Economic Equity, and then we have the Illinois Broadband Lab. And that is a collaboration with the U of I Extension, U of I System, as well as the Department of Technology and Innovation of Illinois. And so here you'll see, again, we're meeting with the government entities, the service providers, working with some of them as well, other private companies, nonprofit organizations, community organizations, as Greg mentioned. As we're focused also therefore on the BEAD program. program, the READY program. And those programs actually have been in existence for a couple of years now. We're actually on phase three, two and three of either one of those respectfully. And here we have, just to give you a glimpse of our roadmap, or the beginning of our roadmap, and in showing you that we have already started our listening sessions in the state. This is something that we've talked with, and thank you again, Mayor, for meeting with us, so that we can set up listening sessions with you all and your community members as well. And so again, our state government agencies, local government agencies, we're all working together and getting your buy-in so that all of our communities can be connected. And this is literally a roadmap of what it is that we're doing in our regions and a tentative schedule. We've actually, again, already started in some communities without, throughout the state, and we'll be doing so up until June, by the end of June, because we have a couple of deadlines. We have our digital equity plan that will be submitted to the federal by the end of this year. And in order to have a robust grant, in order to have a robust proposal that will be submitted, that is why we are going out. We want to hear your voices. We want to hear community members' voices. We want to know exactly what your needs are. So when we have those listening sessions, as we discussed, say exactly what you need. Because as you hear from federal, the funding has come, and we want to make sure that we use those funds effectively and efficiently for ourselves, for government buildings, for homes, schools, and churches as well. So here you'll see, again, partner agencies or trusted members of the local communities. And as Greg mentioned, again, we are working within the digital equity, the READY program, the BEED program, and these are our robust programs that have begun, and we are looking forward to continuing those funds, working with organizations that some of you actually may be familiar with. And we look forward to you joining some of our other calls that we have, which includes the Digital Equity Coalition Call, which is a monthly call. We have presentations from people, representatives from around the state who give presentations on things that they are doing. We also just received funding from federal for the ACP grant. So we had, one of our meetings actually was a robust meeting this past winter going over what it is that we need to do to submit to now receive the funds that we have received. And this is information, if you would like to get in contact with us, please do so. You may find us online on our website. You can also therefore contact us via email if you have any comments or questions, and that is for community members as well. Thank you again. My name is Alicia Ross from the state, and I'm glad that you all had us here today.
Thank you both very much for this excellent presentation. We thank you for your leadership in this. And, you know, Peoria wants to be one of the most connected cities in the state of Illinois. We do have those areas of underserved as well as unserved within our, our city. And so we want to address those needs. We talked about in our last meeting, which I think may have been yesterday, we talked about having two listening sessions in the month of June. We did request possibly having them in May while school is still in, so that we can try to have participation of parents and get the schools to help out with that. Do you know where we are with that request?
I know that is something that we're still working on, and what we would like to know is finding out locations, as we also discuss, locations and potential dates that you all are, that you would like to have us come down and to help out with those presentations.
I think, yes, I think we can close in on those dates and locations, especially if they're in the month of March while, May, while school is still in. It will be, I think, a little bit more challenging to get the parents and family participation if it's in the month of June when school is out.
That makes sense. And I know that you made suggestions yesterday regarding school, community, and then having those separate sessions to make sure that we're addressing each community and that people will have access to come, as well as therefore, we discuss some of the time. So we will definitely confirm that, hopefully by the end of this week.
Okay, fantastic. We just really talked about the importance of having high-speed internet access for all of our residents in Peoria. This is the way that we look for jobs. It's the way that we access our healthcare. It's the way that we do online learning, education. There's so much that can be accomplished by having not just the, the broadband speed, but also the, the tools, the equipment that's needed to access, and then the digital literacy that we need. So we would entertain any questions or comments from the council, beginning with Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Ali, and thank you all for your presentation. I definitely believe that this is very timely as we look to make Peoria a desirable city and we look to recruit talent to our region. With the emphasis on remote work and learning, we can attract people from far and wide that can come to our city, long as we have the connectivity to be able to provide them the quality of life, and that impacts their schooling, their learning, and then also their ability to work from anywhere in the world now. So, very timely. Thank you for inviting them, and I look forward to seeing what we can do to make Peoria the most connected city in the state of Illinois. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Velpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would say, I mean, I have just a clarification question. Let's say, simply providing broadband to these underrepresented communities, do you think it'll address the root cause of why in the first place we haven't got them there, such as the structural inequalities and/or, I would say systemic barriers? Can you comment to that, please?
Briefly, and then we'll, so I think that's a really great point you're raising. It's, there's a lot of infrastructure issues, which this grant does solve the, or fund the infrastructure problem, but there's a broader adoption challenge. Recent studies have shown that up to at least 30% of people who don't currently have internet are choosing not to have it. And it's not only because of affordability, although that's important, it's that they don't feel they need it. And so there's a broader education piece here on all the mayor just mentioned that you can do with the internet, you know, telehealth. We saw during COVID, remote schooling, how essential it is, just connecting to loved ones and remote work, all of these things. I think there's a broader education effort that's needed, and it's another reason why this listening session that's going to happen here in Peoria is so important, so we can hear from people about their connection issues and, you know, why they might not have internet service or why they might have some challenges with their current service.
Thank you. And I just have another follow-up question. I'm actually copying from what Mayor Ali's, you know, concluded. Can you, you know, will this program address factors such as what just the mayor said about the digital literacy? Or probably to, to, to be more crisp, affordability of the device or content of, we have the internet, but then will this program also help the underserved communities to have the device itself? Or even if you have a device, it's hard to buy any software to run anything? So will this program also help, you know, the communities to have at least a bare basic thing to, to, to have it?
Yes. And that depends on the organizations that will be working with Peoria that you all would be referring to us, that will be a part of the listening sessions, that will be part of the management of programming. But yes, digital literacy is, is a thing in our, not just in our state, but in our country. We are and have been in the digital divide, which is why we're grateful to have the funding that is now coming from federal because of the awareness that was, that came about during the height of the pandemic. So yes, that is something that will be addressed, digital literacy, the resources. And you all as a city, as a community, as a county, you all will be deciding on how those funds will be dispersed and how they will be used within your community. And based on those listening sessions from, from community members as well as yourselves, then we'll be able to, to gather that information and to help you strategically put a plan together.
Thank you. I, I just have one question, which is probably very silly, but I will ask you anyways. So what happens to the existing internet providers in this area? So this is on, this service is only for the underrepresented communities or for everybody? This could be an access will piece?
Great question. The state will develop their plan in the priority areas. The funding has to first be to connect anyone who's unserved, then second, underserved, and then the community anchor institutions. The state will award subgrants to current internet service providers, but there's also a wide range. Municipalities could choose to be an internet service provider if they choose to. Nonprofits could as well. Co-ops, telephone co-ops, electric co-ops. Broadly defined, whoever's going to deliver that sort of internet speed and consistently, reliably, affordably, our program is neutral on, on who the provider is. That's where the local decisions, local input, the state grant-making process, scoring process will decide, you know, who the funding will go to.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And just to, can you clarify, there will be both competitive funding as well as an allocation directly for the city? Is that accurate?
It'll be competitive, and the actual way the state subgrants out for the Digital Equity Act grant programs has yet to be decided.
Okay.
I don't want to commit to that.
Okay, all right. And your office is connected?
U.S. Department of Commerce.
It's what?
U.S. Department of Commerce.
Oh, okay.
And then, so it's kind of confusing. So U.S. Department of Commerce and then Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, so.
Okay.
Hand in glove here.
Is there a, a depart, a component within the governor's office as well? Or it's all through DCEO?
DCEO.
Okay. All right. Ms. Ross, Mr. Claus, thank you very much for your presentation. Much appreciated. Madam Clerk?
We'll need a vote to receive and file.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Ruck Regal, seconded by Councilman Seer. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are now at regular business items. Item number 23 dash 085, a communication with the request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny an ordinance or the recommendation from staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R3 single-family residential district for a solar, solar utility facility for the property located at 3901 West Reservoir Boulevard. There's a handout on your desk from the League of Women Voters as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before us tonight is a conversation about our proposed solar development in District Four. It's very unique because it was recommended by our amazing staff, and it was denied by our Planning and Zoning Commission, which is staffed by private citizens who volunteer their time. And so tonight, we're going to have a robust conversation about this because it definitely is a very complex matter. Mayor, I would like to request, excuse me, privilege of the floor for several individuals who will speak in favor of the project and then also in opposition of the project, if I may.
Yes.
Those who I will call, I will call you by first and last name and what organization or neighborhood you may represent. Most of you filled out a speaker card, but there are a couple people who haven't filled out a speaker card. So at the conclusion of your talk, if you can grab a speaker card from the podium and then turn that in to the clerks off, clerk space over here, that'd be great because we'll need that for public record. So Donna Moore and DeMarcus Hamilton will need you to do that at the conclusion of your talk. The first person I would like to give privilege of the floor, though, is Pastor Jonathan Thomas of St. Paul Episcopal Church.
Hi, Jonathan Thomas from St. Paul Episcopal Church. I'm one of the priests there, and we're the partner organization with Hoka Tolo on this community solar project. We met Jason Hawxworth a few years ago because his organization installed panels on the roof of our 54,000 square foot church building to provide all of our electrical needs. That's over 700 panels, and I would like to point out that they are all closer to our nearest neighbor homes than any of the panels on this project would be to any residences. Jason and his partner Ken Zika have a way of selling the tax credits, which obviously the church can't use, to a different company that still allows us to benefit from the solar energy. At the time of installation, three years ago, we were able to save 20% on our electric bills, but with recent rate hikes, because our price is fixed, we have saved over 50% on our electricity. So when they came to us to partner on this community-led solar project, we were all in so that we could create the same sort of equity for others. They're the solar experts, and we are the community partner, and our stipulation was that we get to decide who buys in to the electricity produced. How that works is if the project were approved, we'd have a series of community meetings around the city to explain solar energy to people, how it works, that there are in fact no health concerns related to it, what we do with the panels when they're done and need to be retired, all of those things. And then we ask for community input on who should be able to sign up for the program. All I'm committed to is using our resources to make this available to people who have barriers for, to accessing solar on their own. That might be people who can't monetize the tax rebates, nonprofits like ourselves, or people who don't pay income taxes. Or it could be the vast numbers of people in this city who rent but still have to pay their own utilities, or people in some of our historic areas of town whose rooftops won't support it or where there's too much tree cover. That's what we mean by equity, granting people access to the same resources that I've been given. These subscribers will start with a 40% to 45% savings over their current electrical rate and save more over time because they won't have the wild rate hikes that we've seen recently with Ameren. We've done what we could to make this project as beneficial to all, all as we know how to. We chose a piece of land on the edge of the city that abuts the railroad tracks and is rather steep and not good for much other development. We researched fast-growing trees to plant at the top of the hill that'll block the view of most of the panels from the neighbors without blocking the view of the valley below from their deck. We agreed to plant native pollinators under all the panels to absorb the rainwater that runs off the panels so that this development does not further contribute to that problem in the city, but rather makes a positive ecological impact. We even signed a tripartite agreement with the unions to make sure that the electrical, labor, and mechanical unions all get their fair share of the work on this project. And we did those things out of the profit margin so that we could still offer the greatest savings we could to the end users. This project touches on a lot of things that people around this horseshoe care about. It creates jobs and tax revenue, and frankly draws very little from city resources in return. It helps our environment and creates equity. It's innovative and helps move Peoria toward being a leader in new energy, which we can and should be. It uses private investment on private land to help people with their monthly budgets instead of relying on the government handout. And it creates community through our engagement while supporting so many of our city's stated strategic plan goals and the comprehensive plan passed by this council. And so, if you are considering voting no, I would ask you as a member of this community, if not this project, then when and where? These are state dollars for tax credits that make this project possible, and they're going somewhere in Illinois. And if it's not Peoria, we're just losing out and falling further behind. I hope this explanation helps you and the other people hearing this to understand what this project is really about, and I really hope that you'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry about that.
Thank you, Priest Thomas. We appreciate your words today. Uh, thank you, uh, Priest Thomas. We appreciate your, uh, words today. Uh, next up, on behalf of the Sierra Club, we have Joyce Rosenberg.
My name is Joyce Rosenberg, and I live at forty-thirty North Brookmont Road. I have lived in Peoria since nineteen eighty-nine, and I have been a long-term member of the Sierra Club. I have worked on many local and state environmental issues, including state legislation for clean energy, local campaigns to clean up our air and water, and environmental justice. I am here tonight to present this comment for the Heart of Illinois Group Sierra Club in support of this solar project and requesting this council support the special use zoning, which is allowed in an R three residential district. Mayor Ali and members of the council, an acre of solar panels can save about three hundred thousand pounds a year of carbon dioxide that would have gone into our air from carbon-based sources, according to Columbia University Saban Center. Whether or not you are concerned with rapid climate change or reducing harmful pollution in our air and so, and water, solar energy makes good business sense for the city of Peoria. This six-acre project is being done by a very reputable local business, putting local people to work with jobs for construction, tree planting, landscaping, fencing, and site maintenance. Solar panels provide power for twenty years or more from the sun and not from mining coal, fracking for gas, or drilling for oil. This solar project has a church partnering with a local business and will be a shining example of Peoria progress for community solar. Adding solar panels to our area provides more energy to the grid and eases the strain on power supplies during peak use times such as hot sunny days. The City Development Review Board recommended approval of the request with conditions. The developer responded with multiple steps to meet the conditions and merit approval. Evergreen trees and other landscaping will be a buffer for the backyards of the strip of condominiums, which are the only residences on the street side of the project. Housing is in demand and values typically increase over time. There are many studies by expert appraisers on the internet showing that there are no concerns for loss of property values from solar farms, but the internet will also find many fears and concerns regarding property values and other issues. What is the truth for this situation? Will it be the long-term good for many? Will it be the facts that the developer responded and resolved conditions from the Development Review Board? Or will the decision be based on the feelings and fears of those opposed? This regards property that could be put to a productive use, providing many benefits. The direction and future of Peoria is decided by you, the city council. Heart of Illinois Group Sierra Club urges you to vote in support of the zoning changes and support this community solar project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, uh, Ms. Rosenberg. We really appreciate that on behalf of the Sierra Club. Uh, next up, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, we have Ms. Connie Romanis.
Thank you, um, Mayor Ali and members of the council, council. My name is Connie Romanis, and I'm a lifelong Peorian and a member of the League of Women Voters. And on behalf of the League, um, would like to, um, remind you that in twenty-twenty-two, the League of Women Voters established a climate change committee, and one of the purposes of this committee is to help local governments in central Illinois address the challenges of climate change, global warming, and sustainability. With that purpose in mind, the Board of Directors of the Local League of Women Voters has reviewed the issues related to Agenda Item two-three-dash-zero-eight-five and is respectfully requesting that you follow the recommendations from your staff to approve a special use for solar utility facility for the property located at thirty-nine oh one West Reservoir, Peoria. Surveys conducted nationally consistently show that over fifty percent of Americans are alarmed or concerned about climate change. We anticipate that these numbers would be similar for those living in the city of Peoria. Climate change will not disappear on its own. It will take concerted efforts by individuals, businesses, and government to address this challenge. The city of Peoria has an opportunity to address this challenge in a meaningful and concrete way by allowing for the development of this community's solar project. In addition to addressing climate change, the proposed development will create good, well-paying jobs for skilled tradespeople while at the same time allowing citizens, homeowners, and renters alike to lower their utility bills. Approval of this project will promote sustainable growth and send a clear message that clean energy plays in Peoria. We strongly encourage you to follow the recommendations of your professional staff and grant the requested special use for this property. Thank you for your consideration.
Uh, thank you for your comments, uh, tonight on behalf of the League of Women Voters, uh, Ms. Romanis. Uh, next, on behalf of Ha, uh, Atello LLC, we have Mr. Jason Hawxworth.
Thank you, Ma, Mayor Ali, uh, city council members and staff. Uh, my name is Jason Hawxworth. I'm with Hoka Tolo LLC. Um, we're the, uh, the partner of Saint Paul's as the development partner on the, on this project. Um, we appreciate your service, uh, commitment and consideration of this small community solar project and the unique opportunity for its design and management to be informed through inclusive, uh, community engagement. Saint Paul's Episcopal Church passionately serves the community with a strong focus on equity and inclusion, and Hoka Tolo is pleased, uh, to partner with the church in the development of this project as our own service model has focused on nonprofit, tax-exempt organizations, uh, that have been larger, largely underrepresented in the, underrepresented in the, in the clean energy sector. Our team worked diligently with city staff to have a design that is thoughtful, considerate to the surrounding environment, and compliant with the zoning code requirements with appropriate modifications recommended such as screening and buffering at the property lines. Further, we outreach to Councilman Allen and the Adjacent Condo Association. We worked with Councilman Allen to listen to the concerns of the neighbors. City administration recommended its, this project's approval, uh, as it meets local requirements and is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and city council strategic goal plans. Concerns expressed through planning and zoning focused on glare and utility infrastructure. Uh, the glare study provided by a third party demonstrates no glare impact. Utility infrastructure and solar impact is not based on evidence, and Ameren is the best entity to determine impact of their infrastructure, which is done during the formal interconnection application process and whether any upgrades are required, which is paid for by the project developer should the project move forward. Comments regarding electromagnetic radiation from solar panels are also not evidence-based. Renewable energy is much better alternative than fossil fuels, and this project offsets its own carbon footprint in less than two years. Uh, it is reason, it is renewable energy leader and Greater Peoria has, uh, integral to workforce training with millions of dollars invested in locally, uh, invested locally for solar pipeline training through organizations like Illinois Central College, the Peoria Tri-County Urban League, and Heaven's View Christian Fellowship. And with the support from local unions and local companies like Hoka Tolo, uh, significant training efforts are being made in this, in the energy sector. This project will create broad impact, community engagement, equity, and inclusion. Uh, it'll grow small business, job creation, sustainability, clean energy leadership, positive environmental change, uh, market choice for those who, uh, uh, will subscribe, reduced energy costs, local dollars staying local, and tax revenue, uh, generated from the project. We, as in Hoka Tolo, uh, and Saint Paul's, live, work, play, uh, worship, and serve in Greater Peoria. Uh, who better to pave the path for local urban solar? It works in other communities across the United States, and it can play in Peoria, and it's up to us tonight, I'm supposed to decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawxworth, uh, for providing comments on behalf of Hoka Tolo LLC. At this time, I would like to invite Paul Kluber on behalf of Sandia Drive, uh, to, to speak to the matter at hand. Uh, council members, you all received a packet, um, that was provided by Mr. Kluber, so if you can pull those out as he, uh, describes what is inside of your packet, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Uh, my name is Paul Kluber. I live at, uh, thirty-six oh nine Sandia Drive in Peoria. Uh, in front of you, you have a packet of exhibits and actually the information that, uh, Councilman Allen had me draw up. I wasn't anticipating speaking tonight, so some of the information that I will tell you is taken verbatim from the information packets that you have in front of you. Uh, I'll try to make it as brief as I can. Uh, some of this information actually was the same information that went before the Planning and Zoning Commission that, uh, denied this request. So if you have talked to some of those people and some of this sounds familiar, uh, there is a good reason for that. Okay. Uh, the first reason, mine is more of an informational thing. Please don't get me wrong. I think solar power is great. I think low-income provisioning of part of the cost to go back to people that can't afford the high cost of utilities is fine. Mine is more informational in nature for you to consider before you pass or deny. Uh, the first thing is the glare reflection into the nine condos in the path of the solar panels. If you look at your information, you will see that Exhibit One is an aerial photo and overlaid onto that is arrows with times of day and also the height of the sun above the horizon. The thing you need to keep in, in mind is the date that this takes place. You'll just have to trust me. In my normal day job, I have access to programs that do this. Uh, it is the real thing. It's not something that I made up and just drew on a Google map. Uh, if you take a look at it, you will see the nine condos dead center on the drawing. You will also see that at certain times running from six AM to eleven AM, the sun is coming up behind those buildings. Uh, if you can imagine sitting out on your patio that overlooks the solar panels, having a cup of coffee, you're sitting at your kitchen washing dishes, you're sitting at your dining room reading a paper, the next thing you know, coming right over the roof, right behind you, is the sun that hits the solar panel directly in front of you and comes back and hits you in the face. Unless you want to wear sunglasses when you're reading your newspaper on Sunday out on your patio, or you'd like to work on your suntan like people used to do, holding aluminum panels underneath their face, uh, glare is an issue. If you go to Exhibit Number Two that's provided, you will see that, um, this is a two-story condominium. Uh, the patio is on the top of the second store, not the top, the patio is on the second story, the kitchen's on the second story, dining rooms are on the second story. The solar panel program or the solar panel farm is actually on a hillside that relative to the second story starts two stories above it. By the time it gets to the bottom of the hill close to the railroad tracks, all of a sudden, you're six, seven, eight stories above the solar panels. Moving on, you would ask, why is all this relevant? Well, it's relevant because at certain times of the year and the way the sun moves, there is a very strong possibility that when the sun hits those solar panels, it's gonna come right back into those people that happen to be out at their patio, at their kitchen window, their dining room windows. Uh, it's just unfortunate that those nine people have their condos seventy-five feet, eighty feet from a solar panel farm, which we'll get into a little bit. Uh, second question that you need to consider is this. Uh, the solar farm developer, very nice gentleman, he's come up here and he said he has a glare study that says, don't worry, no problem. The exhibits you have in front of you, Exhibits Three, Four, and Five with yellow highlights because some of it is technical jargon, but if you look at what's in yellow, you will see that anti-glare coatings on solar panels don't necessarily work. Glare studies don't necessarily tell the full story, and location to solar panels relative to commercial dwellings or, in this case, condominiums, uh, don't tell the whole story either. So just because a glare study says there is not an issue, if you look at Exhibits Three, Four, and Five in front of you and the highlighted areas in yellow, um, they tend to disagree with what the gentleman says. Uh, moving on, number three, solar farm access to the Ameren substation. Every solar farm requires access to a substation. In this case, if you look at, uh, Exhibit Number Six, you will see that the substation that they are gonna tap into is at the end of Sandia Drive at the corner of Sandia and Palmyra. If you look at Number Six, you'll see it's indicated where the substation is, where Sandia Drive is, and where the solar farm is. Uh, in the last three years, according to Ameren, we have had six non-storm-related power outages due to the equipment that's on Sandia Drive. Let me emphasize that, please. These are underground cables, and these are non-storm-related mechanical issues that have caused the power to go out, in some cases for hours on end. So dramatic sometimes that they blow the sewer manhole cover off because of what's going on with the failure of the cable underneath it. Why is it important that you have this in front of you? Because you say, we have no control over what Ameren does. Why should we be concerned as a city council? That's a utility problem. It's an engineering problem. It's the problem of the people that live there between them and Ameren. The unfortunate part about that is there's a hundred and thirty-four tax-paying, voting citizens that live on Sandia Drive. And if you add to the problems on Sandia because of attaching a solar farm to cabling that is forty-five years old and mechanical issues along with that, transformers, uh, politically, it's probably not a wise thing to do because I don't think you want a hundred and thirty-four people sitting here complaining about power issues and remembering that it's because a solar farm was attached to the cabling to get it to the substation. And finally, uh, let's see here. Exhibit Number Seven, actually not finally, Exhibit Number Seven is from Ameren, and it's from the department that actually approves. the department that actually approves, on a tentative schedule, the ability of this solar farm to even take place to begin with. If you read that letter, you will see, as the gentleman points out, that initially when you call up Ameren and you say, "We'd like to put in a solar farm," as he describes it, the pre-application just gives the application a 30,000-foot view of what is out there capacity-wise. It's only after it's approved does Ameren do a complete study to see the feasibility of doing it, see the physical issues of getting power from the solar farm up to the substation, and then allotting all of the costs that might be required, I'm assuming, from what they say, which is the second highlighted amount that goes to the developer. So if you do choose to approve this, you need to make sure, in concrete writing, to the best of what your legal department can do, that the developer is completely responsible for upgrading any of the power requirements and ensuring that they do not add to the issues that we have with power outages there. And I also might add, according to the engineering department, and you might find this interesting for those of you that have cable that's buried underground, they think it is not unusual to have two non-storm-related mechanical failures every year. Now think about that just a second. How many of you with electrical power can remember the last time you had a power outage that was not storm-related? And that's the case. And we have had six of them. So yes, we have problems with our power. Ameren has come out there and said it was done 45 years ago. It is old. It needs to be replaced or upgraded. But as you well know, companies are not really inclined to spend money unless they are pulled and tugged and forced to spend money for the type of upgrades apparently they have to do along Sandia Drive. And I will finish by this. There might be a reason why what seems as a politically correct idea of helping low-income families pay for their utilities and also increase the taxes that piece of land pays to the city. But it might not be the best idea after all when you take a slightly different view. If you Google "solar farms" and you look at all of those pictures that you see, because I'm sure all of you at one time or another have Googled something, and seeing it flashes all of these pictures of different things, in this case, it would be solar farms. I would challenge you to find any solar farm sitting within 500 feet of a two-story condominium. I would challenge you to find any solar farm that's sitting within 1,000 feet of any two-story condominium. So just because it's right politically to do so, and it feels good to do so, most of the solar farms you see, which is the final exhibit you have in front of you, which is a copy of the Journal Star article, the lead article in January, it had a picture of a solar farm.
Excuse me, excuse me, Paul.
Solar farm sits out in the middle.
Sorry to interrupt, sir. We need to conclude as soon as possible. But thank you, though.
Thank you very much for your time and hopefully the information will help you in your deliberations.
No, thank you so much for being very thorough. We really appreciate it. And I know it was very insightful for us. Thank you so much, Paul.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have Ms. Donna Moore representing Valley View Condo Association.
I'm going to read this because my 70-plus-year-old mind isn't what it used to be. First of all, I'm big, okay, I'm sorry, I'm Donna Moore.
Excuse me, Donna, can you just pull the mic down to you just a little bit? Thank you so much.
I'm Donna Moore. I live at 3818 West Richwoods. I represent the line of condos that this will be right in our backyard. I didn't hear a lot of what everybody said tonight because of the sound, but I've met with the developers several times and I know what they're trying to do. I'm a big opponent of alternative energy. I believe in climate change 100%. I have grandchildren. I want them to have an earth. But this is a six-acre solar farm 80 feet from our back door. Not 80 feet from our backyard, but 80 feet from our back door. I doubt, as Mr. Kluber said, that's probably never been done before. I couldn't find where it's ever been done before. And it's an area with lots of wildlife. Okay, first, they went to the zoning commission for a six-acre solar farm 80 feet from our back door. We talked about all our concerns, Ameren, aesthetics, possible health issues, property values, even the study that, the glare study. The zoning commission unanimously denied the request for a six-acre solar farm 80 feet from our back door. Now you may disagree with some of our findings as far as health and property values. There's research goes either way. But you won't find any research on an eight, eight, or six-acre solar farm 80 feet from our back door. The staff, I don't know if that's Planning Commissioner or what, the staff, they approved They approved it for guidelines for special use. They do not take into consideration anything except residential special use. They have the same guidelines for a nursing home as they do a six-acre solar farm in our backyard. The developer said it would save money on electrical bills for low-income people. Great, I love that. He also said that if he built it five miles away, he could still service those same people. It didn't have to be 80 feet from our back door. He mentioned solar panels by Allens in Peoria Heights. I don't know if the neighbors protested. Maybe they thought they couldn't fight against Allens. However, that's a few rows of not, a six-acre solar farm. And the one at Mount Holly Airport, which is not even close to one acre and is three tenths of a mile from any residence, the trailer park, it's 1,500 feet from the trailer park. It's not a six-acre solar farm 80 feet from somebody's back door. Please do not let them build this six-acre solar farm 80 feet from our back door. 80 feet, less than 30 yards. That's a pitching wedge. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, for your comments on behalf of Valley View. Excuse me. Next up, we have Demarcus Hamilton representing Valley View Condo Association.
Thank you, Councilman Allen, the rest of the city council, thank you, Mayor Rita Ali. I'm not going to go on a huge, long tangent about plus or minus. I appreciate Ms. Donna and Paul as well, too. And I wanted to be, I wanted to be officially put on record that I would gladly grab one of those yellow pieces of paper. Anybody that knows me knows that I support solar as well, too. I support renewables, I support recycling, any forms of conservation, compost. We need to figure a lot of those things out here in the city of Peoria. And I would love for Peoria to be, to lead the way in the region when it comes to renewables. So this is not about whether or not we support solar. This is about supporting solar in someplace that makes sense. When it comes to the Valley View condos and that space, that small plot of land on the back end, as Paul already mentioned, this is a concern about not only just property values and things like that. We can put that, health, of course, we see evidence pro and against, for and cons and all that stuff. But when it comes to the substation, the power outages, and just plugging those, plugging the new materials from those solar panels, from the solar farms into the 45-year-old faulty equipment that is Ameren's, it just doesn't make sense. Again, this is not about whether or not solar makes sense. Solar definitely makes sense. Going green, seeing Peoria go green definitely makes sense. But plugging new equipment into 45-year-old faulty equipment does not make sense. Relying on Ameren to fix it also doesn't make sense. I don't think anybody here would trust Ameren to come fix anything when it comes to something that they can get away with not fixing. And so when it comes to the solar farm, I think that I would love for all of us together as a city of Peoria to find somewhere to put this project. As Ms. Donna mentioned, and we were on a call with Jason not too long ago, and he underscored the fact that he can service low-income housing, low-income residents from anywhere in the city. So if that's the case, luckily, this project doesn't die at Valley View. And so I want you guys to be mindful when you vote that this is not to kill solar. This is not anti-solar. To vote no on this particular item is to not to shoot down solar. It's to suggest that we find somewhere that makes sense to put this solar project so that way we can be a leader in the region when it comes to going green. And we're also going green in a capacity that makes sense and doing it in a space in the city that makes sense because we can still reach those residents that need it the most. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton, for your remarks on behalf of Valley View Condo Association. That concludes our citizens' address for this matter. As the District 4 Councilmember, I'm sharing my recommendation for the proposed solar farm at 3901 West Reservoir Boulevard. After much consideration and discussions with constituents, staff and various stakeholders, it would be best to support the recommendation of denial from the Planning and Zoning Commission for the proposed solar farm. While I acknowledge the importance of transitioning to renewable energy and the impact of climate change, I have received feedback from the constituents in District 4 expressing concerns about the potential impact of the proposal. As their representative, it is important me to consider and address their concerns and any hesitations they may have. I have made an effort to conduct due diligence by performing research and hosting multiple stakeholder meetings. However, this decision does not reflect a negative disposition towards future solar or renewable energy projects in our district or city. Rather than focusing on the opposition, we could use this as an opportunity to engage and educate our constituents about urban solar farms, which can help us develop a strategy that benefits both our citizens and solar developers. I'm willing to assist in the development of such a strategy, including the identification of alternative locations for urban solar farms in District 4 and other areas of our city. In conclusion, I am not anti-solar or anti-renewable energy alternatives, but I am pro-District 4 and my constituents. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny this request for special use.
For a second? Seconded by Councilmember Grab. As we go into discussion, I need to ask staff, city staff member, Assistant Director of Community Development to explain the staff recommendation, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Just to give you a summary of the proposal, it is a six-acre site that's currently undeveloped. The technical review that our community development staff provided found that, as we reviewed the proposal with the standards for special use, that it did meet our requirements and that's why we did recommend approval. It provides, the proposal includes fencing around the perimeter of the site. It includes landscape buffering along the east of the site adjacent to the rear yard residential properties that you heard tonight. They, there are some conditions and waivers that are included in the recommendation, again, that came through our review. Waivers for fence material on Richwoods and Reservoir. There is waiver for sidewalk installation on the Richwoods side of the street. And then there are conditions of approval that we recommended through our review that the applicant is also concurrent with, which includes making sure that the access roads are paved, appropriate equipment facilities are designed with appropriate material, and again, making sure that there's appropriate landscaping as, in the front yards and the buffering for the residential properties. Does that answer your questions, Madam Mayor?
Yes, if you stick around in case there are any additional questions. Director Allison. Councilmember Kelly? Uh-oh, what? Oh, wait, hold on just a minute. Okay. Thank you, Paul. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll also be voting to deny. My reasons, as usual, are a little different. Solar power has been around for a while. As a matter of fact, when I was in eighth grade, I had a solar battery project. But in appropriate places and for appropriate uses. Solar began to get a lot of subsidies from the feds 40 years ago to help them get over the hump of being a viable economic alternative. That hasn't happened. However, the subsidies are enormous at this point. And the rush to alternatives that don't make economic sense continue apace. In the meantime, fossil fuels, et cetera, gotten cleaner and cleaner and cleaner, and they provided reasonably priced power. This power is going to go out to poor people, supposedly. And the rah-rah people who are in favor of this are the ones that have shut down our very clean power plants and doubled, and more than doubled, the utility bills of people in this city. This hurts the poor the most. So the poor were used to shut down the Edwards Plant in Duck Creek, but now they have to be part of the transition and they can least afford that. I don't like to be part of this kind of a game. If this is a, and also, you know, we had global warming, the science was settled, and somehow those dire predictions never came about. There's still snow on Kilimanjaro. We still have our solar, our polar ice caps. It didn't work so well that they had to change the name. It's not global warming anymore because that didn't exactly work out. So now it's climate change, which is nicely undefined. These kinds of things cost fortunes to feed an ideology. And they harm taxpayers and now with so many places like Peoria, they harm ratepayers. And so I don't want to jump on that train, and I will be voting against that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Did you have your light on? We kind of started all over here because of a technical issue. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you. Oh, I have my light on. First, to ask staff a question.
Okay.
And I do have some comments, but I can make them later. Is there any alternative site that you're aware of in the city of Peoria that would fit? You know, that's six acres that could support such a project?
So we certainly could look. We haven't done a search for any alternative site at the moment, but that's something we could certainly work with and do.
But you don't, you don't know if there is one? Okay. I just find it hard to believe whether or not there is one. Okay. I'm going to support this project. I think it's, it's well overdue. We have been pushing for innovation and investment and for clean renewable energy, and this is our first opportunity that a project's come forward to the city of Peoria. is our first opportunity that a project's come forward to the city of Peoria. I understand some of the neighbors' concerns, but I don't buy based on the data and the evidence that I've seen that it, that this is going to be a project that is really going to interfere with the quiet enjoyment of their property. I think it's, it's a very important step for this city and this council to make, not only to support renewable energy, but also to support local businesses and local labor and local jobs that this will produce, and to help citizens reduce their utility bills and to have an alternative energy source. So I support this wholeheartedly, and I thank the petitioner and the pastor for bringing this project forward to us and finding a location, and I hope we pass it here tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Valpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually echo with Councilwoman Beth Jensen's comments. I am also a strong believer in investing in renewable energy, and I believe that that takes us to a sustainable future. So I understand the concerns of the neighborhood, but we have to look at the big picture that is bringing jobs. And we also, it creates a local employment, first off. And then I personally visited the site. Some of the concerns are very real, that the farm is going to be very close. But then, if you look at the big picture, I think I favor to support that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. I have to say, for full disclosure, for the past seven years, I've been an advocate for solar energy and also for the bipartisan legislation in Illinois, making Illinois a leader in clean energy, solar energy. I learned a lot about solar when I worked at Illinois Central College and helped to develop and oversee ICC's solar workforce training program. Solar is one of the fastest-growing industries in the nation. I find this opportunity to be a unique opportunity for Peoria, kind of an inaugural opportunity to launch similar-type projects within our community, to make our community safer and healthier in terms of environmental justice. So I will support the project as well and hope that it passes. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for all the people that we have here tonight, the very helpful information from everybody. Same reason as for the mayor, I mean, I have to be honest with everybody. In two thousand nineteen, first of all, I do believe in solar energy because in two thousand nineteen, I worked very hard with our staff and with our RLI to start their farm over there. Now, to make sure everybody understands, the farm at RLI, the zoning over there was commercial and industrial. It was six-point-five acres, and they were over seven hundred feet from the closest resident there were in the mobile home part. So it's a little different. It's hard for me, although I do support solar, it's very difficult for me to ask someone to have a farm eighty feet away from their back door. So I think the location is just wrong. The project is great, the location is wrong. I will be supporting my colleague from the Ford District. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Rockrigo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Councilmember Kelly's comments kind of reminded me that back in, I believe it was sixth grade, I, during a science fair, had one, my, my project that year was on solar energy. So I would agree with Councilman Kelly that this topic has been one that I think we as a community and we as a nation have, have had for a long time. And tonight's discussion, I think, is a very important one. And I believe in the power of solar and the power of being able to have a, an organized plan on being able to implement this into a grid. Prior to COVID, I had the opportunity of touring through, through a European country, actually the only European country, which has a plan to be able to be self-sufficient by a certain timeframe. And they are up right now to twelve percent solar. But it is a dedicated plan that they have come with and been able to add in new construction, been able to talk about solar farms, how solar energy is implemented by zoning within parcels. And so when you travel the country, when you travel the city, you see an integrated plan in there. Myself, that's the piece that I, I think I'm missing here tonight. I, I'm sitting here listening, and we've had some great speakers on both sides and some very valid points. And there are a lot of pros, more pros on why solar is right for our community. And to be able to help with those energy costs for our citizens that are most impacted by those high energy costs are extremely important. But I think, for me, we've missed a step. We need to have an organized plan, and maybe that will come out whenever we, as a council, sit down and have a strategic plan. It didn't come up in our last strategic plan. This did not hit our, our level. Maybe it should have. But I also think about what we are dedicating as a city. We are doing construction projects, and we haven't put solar into our perspective. And I think, for me, we can't pick one piece and not the other. When I look at staff recommendations, and I like a lot of the staff recommendations, but the recommendation of maybe moving the solar panels back from that property line was not one of them that was considered. And with six acres, it seems to be one that could easily have been considered. And I appreciate the paved roads. I think that's important. But I think the residents who are probably most impacted are more worried about the distance than they are the road materials for long-term, for, for this particular project. The citizens who are impacted close by in the condominiums, I fully believe, are not against solar. They're wanting it utilized in a way that is consistent throughout the city. And I think we've, we've had conversations on short-term rentals, on cannabis distribution points. And one of the things comes from the fact that then how does that, that precedent from one become and be used throughout the city? And I think that's where a plan has to come forward. I'm not against solar, and maybe this comes back in a way that can be approved tonight, maybe it gets approved tonight. But for me right now, I'm not at the capacity that I can push for approval on this. I like the work that's been done. I think that there's a lot more work that we can do so that we can all be very consistent and comfortable in the vote that we make, not only on the first of a project like this that's in a residential area, but then, but the ones that follow that. And interestingly enough, throughout the country, there are some neighborhoods and subdivisions that are being built that their thought process, that they are actually being clean energy-developed communities, where that is actually part of the subdivision or, or the neighborhood and being built in. And so I think that there's a lot of ways that we can go, but I think we've got to do that planning here. Maybe it's a policy session, maybe it's within the strategic planning, but I look forward to those outcomes so that I can support solar projects in the future. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Grab?
It seems to me Councilman Allen is trying to do something with his district, with this neighborhood. He's not trying to do something to them. And this is where our council breaks down sometimes in its deliberations. We substitute our judgment for that of the people greatest impacted, and those are the folks who are living eighty feet from this. My goodness gracious, when I looked out the window today, I saw sunlight for the first time in several days. I know Leah Allison that we can find other places in this city to do this. And I'm rather disappointed that staff hasn't started to think about maybe future projects, even though we're not going to approve, I hope, the project that's being rammed down the throats of the people in this part of town. We need to start thinking about where it would be embraced instead of embracing a Hindenburg model of implementation of solar, smart biofuels. It's just that simple. And, you know, we can come in here and say all kinds of buzzwords that make us feel good, sustainability and inclusion and equity, but what about all those things as it relates to the property values and investments that the people have made in this part of town? And we wonder sometimes why folks really don't want anything to do with the city of Peoria, why they're suspicious when we do anything by way of pre-annexation or whatever. This is why. This is why, and it's a shame because solar deserves a better introduction to this community than what's happening here today. I respect the, the judgment of my fellow district councilman, and I will tell you, Councilman Allen, after considering our conversation today, in my years of service on this body, I have never supported something, it's been now going, close to twelve years being District Two Councilman, I have never supported something for District Two that I didn't think was good for our entire city. So I don't think there's that bifurcation that, oh, this is not good for my district but good for the city. The people in District Four are part of our city. Some of these people have lived there, folks, for decades, decades. So I'm looking forward to some wonderful project that can be brought forward that won't come with this kind of heat and negative energy. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. The motion is to deny a special use, an ordinance approving a special use. There's no more discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with seven yays and four nays. Ali, Jensen, Euler, and Valpula. Madam Clerk?
Item number twenty-three dash zero eight six, a communication with the request to adopt an ordinance provided for issuance of general obligation bonds in an aggregate amount not to exceed twenty million five hundred thousand to the city of Peoria, Peoria County, Illinois, to provide for the purpose of financing certain capital improvements within the city and providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to turn the floor over to our Finance Director, Kyle Crady, to talk through this item that we have on the agenda this evening.
Yeah, absolutely. The ordinance in front of you tonight is brought to you based off the discussion two to, well, at the last meeting. This would be the issuance of twenty million dollars in debt for the Civic Center for the needed capital improvements at that facility. In terms of timeline, we are looking at, if this is approved tonight, a bond rating in late April with a hopeful closure at the end of, at the end of May, obviously market-dependent. The one thing I do want to just address in the actual ordinance itself, you'll notice that the ordinance is for a not-to-exceed amount of twenty million five hundred thousand. That is standard protocol when you are looking at bond issuances to allow for the cost of the issuance, as well as any premiums or discounts that might be provided on that debt. So the intention is still that we will be providing under this ordinance the twenty million dollars to the Civic Center for their capital improvements. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question, Director. Can you explain to all our, all of us and our listeners the relationship between the bond and the items that would qualify on their capital improvement? Thank you.
Absolutely. Anytime that bonds are issued, those capital improvements or those items that you're, you are purchasing as part of the use of those funds have to be what they call bondable projects, i.e., they need to have a useful life beyond the debt, so in this case, twenty years. So if we're issuing this debt, those projects would need to be over that twenty-year useful life.
And what are some of the items that would qualify?
Things like roofs and mechanicals and all of those different areas. Obviously, the ordinance itself does discuss the ice plant in it as an op, as an option for use. So it is those types of items. Things like carpet and those kind of things don't necessarily always qualify because they don't have a twenty-year useful life.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Crady, can you provide some clarity as we look to potentially add this new debt service to our annual obligations? We're currently paying our annual pension obligations, we're currently paying into our CSO obligation as well, too. Do you see that if we add this, would this possibly hinder our ability to still maintain those other debt services that we have on the books?
I don't necessarily have that concern right now, primarily because of how this debt is being structured. If you remember from the conversation a couple weeks ago, how this debt is going to be structured is interest-only until 2030, at which point the existing six-and-a-half million to seven million dollars in debt we're paying, debt payments that we're paying on behalf of the Civic Center right now expire and roll off. So the intention of this is to provide the needed capital now while also not hindering us in the short term of meeting some of those obligations.
And again, just for clarity, we are paying this out of our current HRA tax, and do you not foresee an increase in our current HRA tax to take care of this?
Not within the current structure, but obviously that would be a discussion for future councils.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. Other discussion? Councilmember, Councilmember Rockrigo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the issuance of these general fund bonds as outlined.
Seconded by Councilmember Seer. Continued discussion? Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Crady, wondering if you have an opinion, if this will have, once we take on this additional obligation and debt, any impact on our rating?
This, I don't think the addition of this debt will have any impact on our rating. The, the factors that have affected the city's rating over the years has been more our reserve levels, which, as you saw in your packet in the financial report, is improving. So that may have a positive impact on our rating. The other area that the rating agencies have looked negatively on the city is related to our pension obligations, and that's obviously something where we now currently have a plan to tackle, whether it be just in the short term over the next four years, that having that plan may also help us. I would love to sit here and say that I think we're going to get a rating increase as part of this, but I don't want to, I don't want to promise that right now.
We can certainly make a good case for it, and we're going to try.
And we're going to try, yeah.
Got to try. One other question I have, do we have any update on the status of the negotiations with the Civic Center and the Rivermen on a contract?
No, we don't at this point in time. I do think that, that both parties... I do think that both parties are still, you know, moving down the path of operating in good faith to do that, but we don't have any update at this point in time that I can give you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions? The motion is to approve ordinance to issue the general obligation bonds. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously.
We are at unfinished business. Item number 22 dash two nine three, a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance amending Article 19, operation of a cannabis business of Chapter 18, Licenses and Miscellaneous Business Regulations of the Code of the City of Peoria.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you. This is an item that we've deferred, which comes back to you, which is the discussion about our cannabis dispensaries, the number that we have, and any of the regulations that we might like to consider. We do have Deputy Corporation Counsel Chrissy Kabuska is here as well to talk about any of the specific recommendations that we've laid out. This item had been deferred, and we pushed it out until this meeting for discussion.
Yeah, and I don't know that we have enough time to really discuss it tonight. I almost want to see either this item pushed to a policy session that we have right before a council meeting or pushed to a special meeting. I'm seeing some heads shake. So can I get a motion moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal, that we're going to move this to, do you think we have time right before the next meeting in March, or do you think we should move it to April?
What, you know, I think maybe if we did it at the first meeting in April, if council would be amenable to that, we could schedule it for like four o'clock, and so we've got two hours to discuss this prior to the council meeting if council is amenable to that, and we can schedule it for that first meeting in April.
Maybe 4:30?
4:30.
Or, do you want an hour and a half? Councilmember Seer, thoughts?
I apologize, Madam Mayor. Since it's going to be my motion, I know I will be out of town the first meeting of April. Can we put the second meeting in April?
You don't want to move it that far.
If council so desires, we could certainly look at 4:30 on the 28th and have a policy session at that time.
I see heads shaking. That's okay. That would give us an hour and a half before our regular...
That motion moved to defer until our next meeting in March.
Figure out the time.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, sounds good. Seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm definitely in support of the policy session. Deputy Corporation Kabuska, can you provide any update, though, regarding our two, or actually our three active special use permits that we have out there in the queue? The old Applebee's, the one out in shops at Grand Prairie in Metro Center? And then also, do we have any potential applicants that have provided any interest of possibly applying for a special use permit?
Sure, I'd be happy to give you what I know about those. I will also point out, unfortunately, I am not able to be here on March 28th, so we can certainly see if there's someone else in the legal department that can provide this information, but I do know that unfortunately, historically, I have been the person that has been in front of you for a few years with this. So I feel like I have a good handle on some of the history at least. But in the material that you had tonight, we did give you a list of where we believe we're at with all of the licenses that the state of Illinois has issued and where they're at with their special use permits. So for example, Trinity, we know, has special use permits, and they have a license for both of their facilities. North Cardinal Ventures LLC does have an approved special use permit. Exotic Strains LLC does have a special use permit. World of Weed does have a special use permit. Of those three that I just listed, none of those have actually applied for a city business license at this point, however. So we have not seen those applications come through. As of right now, today, there are a potential, we believe, of 11 current licenses that are in our BLS region. And then again, you can see in the chart what has the special use permit and then who has a city license. None of those others, however, have anything on file, it's my understanding.
Thank you for that update. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, we have not voted yet. I'm concerned about having a meeting on cannabis without Council Kabuska there. She's the one that has had the wealth of knowledge, the, all the information, and so maybe we can find an agreeable date that's sooner than later, where she's present and we're all available. We can try to look for a date within the next three weeks. It could potentially, I think we can try to search for an agreeable date if you're willing to make that adjustment, Councilman Seer.
Madam Mayor.
Seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Grab?
One of the things that I'm a little concerned about is letting this drag on and drag out. I think it's important that the council knows what's in the pipeline, what may be elapsing soon, whatever. Do we have any idea what might be coming forward between now and God knows when we schedule this policy session? Is there anything in the pipeline?
Not that we've seen, at least as to the existing licenses that we know that the state issued at the end of December. So interestingly enough, when we first started talking about this, we had eight social equity licenses that had been issued for our BLS region. By the time we came back to it in December, they had added two to that list. We also know that as of January 1st, they've announced that they're going to issue additional licenses, and one, at least one, will come to our BLS region, but that's the only information I have on timing at this point.
I don't want to get into something that could be litigious, but is there any feedback you can give us on the status of the one that was proposed and approved on Glenn?
Just that they have yet, you know, although anybody that has a special use permit, they have yet to propose any business licenses to the city.
Well, we did get a letter in reference to that location, and I'm just wondering if that remains in the queue for potentially being a viable cannabis outlet, or if the water has been muddied to the point where that's no longer a viable location. That's something I need to know, because I think it's about time we shut these off. I don't think they're healthy for our community. I've gone along with some of them. But at some point, with the risks to health of smoking and everything else, what are we really doing here? I suppose, you know, if we use one of those buzzwords we heard earlier, we can justify almost anything and then look back and, hell, I don't even think 20 years, 10 years, and say, what were we thinking in this state? Anyway, Mayor, I'm anxious to see the Bradley game as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Should be an interesting discussion. Just a quick poll, are you available next Tuesday, if we did one next Tuesday?
Absolutely. Unfortunately, March 28th is a mandatory parent meeting for my kid's school, but any other date, I'm happy to make myself available.
That would be an in-between meeting, either 4:30 to 6:30 or 4:30 to 6:00.
That's good.
We'll figure out the time.
Parent meeting is more important.
I'm sorry, what was that?
At 6:00, we could do it at 6:00.
We could do 6:00 to 8:00, or 6:00 to when we're done, 6:00 to 7:30 or 8:00. Okay, I'm seeing some thumbs up to that. That's what we'll try to shoot for, next Tuesday at 6:00. And we'll try to end no later than 8:00. That's the plan. Thank you, council. Madam Clerk?
We are now at new business.
Any new business? Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't vote. Thank you, Councilman Euler, keeping me on my toes here. That motion is to defer until next Tuesday. Is that right? Councilman Seer, seconded by Councilman Ruck Regal. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Any new business? Councilmember Grab?
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Department of our city is hosting a Coffee with Code Open House on Wednesday, March 22nd, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Peoria Public Library at 107 Northeast Monroe in the lower-level auditorium. Coffee with Code is a great opportunity to meet your code enforcement inspector over some coffee, talk to city staff about any issues, and learn more about grant programs. The other announcement that is very pertinent to our constituents is that the Community Development Department is accepting applications for, we knew it was coming, another tranche of money for the Neighborhood Mini Grant Program, and they're accepting those applications until Friday, April 7th. With this program, neighborhoods can get up to $5,000 to fund a project of their choice. Now, last year, we saw a wide variety of projects, including block parties, public art projects, bike repair station, youth litter cleanup, and security cameras. Neighborhoods can apply online by visiting the City of Peoria webpage and searching Neighborhood Mini Grant Program. Or, if you're old-fashioned like me, you can call the Community Development Department directly at 309-494-494-8600, and you can have a paper application mailed to you. Can you believe that? We still have paper. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Reganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're all proud of the local homegrown businesses that we have here in Peoria. Well, today, one of our very own, George Manias, is celebrating his 92nd birthday, 76 years in business, so I just thought he deserved a shout-out from the council for tonight.
That's amazing. That's a hand clap. Happy birthday, George. Fantastic. Thank you for sharing that. Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Very quickly, we've got about 27 minutes until the Bradley takes on Wisconsin tonight in the NIT game, bringing not only local but national attention to the good things that are happening right here in Peoria, Illinois, so I know we wish them all the best.
Thank you very much. Anybody know what channel that's going to be shown on?
ESPN.
ESPN? Woo-hoo. Okay. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be very fast, too. Just in the spirit of shout-outs, obviously shout-out the Bradley Braves, who won the Missouri Valley Conference regular season title, so that was like the first time in a long time, so congratulations to the Braves. But also, I want to shout-out some of our local high school basketball teams, including my Richwoods Knights. We won our first regional title in a good long time, so shout-out to Coach Bobo Smith there in the Knights. I would like to also shout-out the Peoria High Lady Lions, who received a third-place trophy. Aaliyah Guyton, who was first-team All-State, and Coach Michi Effort has a great program there. And then I would be remiss if I didn't shout-out, because it is a greater Peoria shout-out, Metamora Redbirds won the first place in the IHSA Basketball Championship, yes, beating the powerhouse Chicago Simeon. And I have to bring it up, I was a junior in high school when we lost to Derrick Rose in overtime to Simeon, and my boy Justin Dane, who's on the coaching staff at Metamora, who was an All-Stater for us that year, he got his revenge for the Richwoods alumni. So go Redbirds. Thank you.
You're welcome. And everybody, remember that the annual St. Patrick's Parade will be held this Friday at 11:00 p.m., starting right in front of the Civic Center. Sorry. Madam Clerk?
We are now at citizens' opportunity to address the city council and town board. We did receive comment cards.
We have first, we have four individuals here, starting with Jonathan Hudson-L. We have Mary Kerr.
Madam Mayor, city council and staff, I thank you for all you have done. I almost have tears. Like Congressman, Councilman Seer said last time, we're just in the second period. We're getting the third period starting, and I hope that we get a contract. My name is Mary Kerr, and I'm from Morton. Sorry about that. We moved to the area in 2004. My husband came here with Caterpillar, and I happen to love hockey. I grew up with Bobby Hull and the Blackhawks, and I had a passion for hockey, so I was so excited that Peoria had a team. But I'm also a relationship person. In these 19 years, I've probably attended at least half, if not three-quarters, of the Rivermen games in town, and I've watched relationships for the last 15 years between the PCC and the RIVs. And they seem to work really well together and had great partnerships. There was advertising on the outside billboards, we had many Saturday games, we had Bradley Saturday afternoon games, and then the night Rivermen game. There were also many other things. We had good concessions, but in the last four years, things have changed, and it doesn't appear to be in a partnership anymore. And since this whole discussion started several months ago, I've heard a lot of people in talk radio talk about this horrible Monarch Company and Mr. Yule, who saw a value in Peoria and their hockey, and he became majority owner. We do still have local owners. But Mr. Yule has put millions of dollars into the city of Peoria because of our 40 years of legacy hockey. He's brought jobs to this city, and that Peoria has, among lots of other good things in Peoria, but he has brought lots of good things to the city. Peoria is known for its hockey. It draws people to the city, and you've heard a lot the last month or so, the value of hockey to Rivermen or to the city. But the city brought ASM Global to our city with no investment or knowledge of Peoria or what was important to our community. The Authority Board has listened to narratives and hung on every word that Mr. Edgar has said. He's a great booking agent, but he has not been a very good manager, and money is the bottom line. I believe ASM should have been told or communicated to about what's important to our community. Do we even know what's valuable to our citizens? Mayor Ali stated that the Rivermen are a staple and a vital part of our community. It breaks my heart that a handful of people who hang on every word of a GM from ASM Global has the power to wipe out a 41-year-old staple or legacy to Peoria. The people in the Authority Board look at the Rivermen organization as nameless, faceless people who don't bring in enough money for this global, worldwide corporation. people who don't bring in enough money for this global, worldwide corporation with offices in Australia, England, Dubai, Los Angeles, and Brazil. This corporation is telling people in Peoria what's important for us. They have a narrative. This whole situation with the Rivermen being treated so poorly never should have happened. The names of the front office staff aren't even known, I bet. They even walk past, in the great hall, the general manager without even being acknowledged. As I said before, I'm a relationship person. Where is the relationship between the city and the RIVs? A partnership? We are all better together. Together, we can make great things happen. How did this whole thing happen? Where are the checks and balances? The last four years has been really very upsetting and heartbreaking. I pray that a win-win solution happens soon. And I believe the city's mantra or motto is, "Peoria is the place." Well, Peoria is the place where the SPHL President's Cup Champions play hockey, the Rivermen, a 40-year-old legacy. And I really hope it continues. Thank you very much.
Have Molly Cattigan?
Hi, I'm Molly Cattigan, and I'm representing the floundering Columbia Terrace North Neighborhood Association. I've been here before. This is probably my third attempt at this. It's nice to hear that the code enforcement people are going to have a meeting on the 22nd. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend. I'm having surgery on Friday. I came here to talk to you about two things. The lack of ordinance, ordinances being followed regarding litter. The litter problem all over this city is abominable. It is absolutely horrific and dangerous in my neighborhood. There is not a sidewalk in my neighborhood anywhere that I can safely walk my dogs anymore because of shattered glass thrown there by drunks on a daily basis. I've been told by the city, "Oh, you shouldn't be picking it up." And I said, "Well, if not me, who? If my dog were to step in any of that broken glass, they could bleed to death before I could get him home." So I pick up the litter every day, and it takes me about an hour on my walk to pick it all up. And I get back home, and the area I've already picked up is trashed again. So I'm asking for one thing. I have tried to educate the people in my neighborhood, most of whom don't give a shit, frankly, about the importance of keeping their yards clean. And I've said to them, and I've been quoted, that there is an ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, that says that people who are renters or homeowners are responsible for all the litter and trash on and in their property, up to and including the curbside. I'm not going to ask for a yes or no on that, because I don't want to use my time arguing on that. But if that were true, and it appears to me that about 90% of the people in my neighborhood are not aware of that ordinance, perhaps education is what's needed. So I'm asking the council to get together and put together a little note that can be sent to every voting person in this city, just like we have all the political postcards that go out every year, that says, that tells them what this ordinance is. Because it's really gotten to the fever pitch. On a daily basis, there are syringes in my neighborhood and used disposable diapers. It has become a public health hazard for everybody in my neighborhood, which is made up primarily of the working poor, the retired people, and shut-ins. When I have someone who is wheelchair-bound in my neighborhood who can't even safely get down off the sidewalk because of broken glass, and she's going to get a flat tire in her power-operated machine, that just is absolutely inexcusable. So I'm asking for an educational component to come into play. I'm asking for, if nothing else, and I have this from the last three code enforcement people in my neighborhood, that they got frustrated handing out tickets to people who are chronic litterers because the tickets are never paid. So I'm asking you to basically put on your big-boy pants, big-girl pants, and start enforcing this ordinance and making people pay for being chronic litterers. Because there are people in my neighborhood who basically, it looks like somebody used their front yard as a town dump. And I know it has all to do with integrity and self-worth and power in your neighborhood, but from my point of view, it shouldn't matter whether it's a homeowner or a renter. There should not be all this trash and litter all over the city. And I know that you're always trying to advocate getting new businesses coming into the city, but I got to tell you, anybody from out of town who's going to drive the West Bluff and look at all the litter on Main Street is going to go, "Gee, yeah, syringes, diapers along the street? Yeah, I'd really like to start a business here." So I want you to think about that, because that really... And I was quoted, I had someone say to me one time, "Did I really think litter was that important?" And I said, "Yes, as a rabid environmentalist, I certainly do." It also bespeaks the broken window syndrome. My neighborhood is being turned into a ghetto because of all the trash. I moved here in 2014, as it was going to be my retirement place. I'm now not safe to walk outside my house. I don't want to be a prisoner in my home, and I don't want to be a prisoner in my neighborhood. Thank you.
You're welcome. And our final speaker is Mike Olson.
I'll make this quick, because I want to watch that game tonight, too. I wasn't able to... Basically, I had a little speech for the authority last night. Mike Olson, 2407... No, that's Wisconsin. That was a long time ago. 1025 West Teton Drive. I'd just like to let the mayor and the council know that we're appreciative of all the interest that's been taken on behalf of all the people that are in this room, and many, many others that attend the games. I mean that sincerely. But there's three things, real quick, that I want to acknowledge that went on, that I was able to observe in the last two weeks at our Civic Center. Number one, the synchronized skating that was here. I hear all the time, "The ice plant for the Rivermen." No, no. What about the jamboree kids that were here last Saturday, from 9:00 in the morning till 3:00? Five-to-eight-year-olds, boys and girls. Boys and girls, from all of our central Illinois area, Peoria, Pekin, Decatur, Springfield, Champaign, Decatur. They were on that ice from 9:00 in the morning till 3:00 in the afternoon. They break the ice up into three different sections, and they play cross. There's 30 kids on the ice same time. And some people might say, "Well, they could do that only." They had such a great time. You could just see it. They had a great time. But just, I applaud the authority for providing that. The other thing I mentioned just real quickly was that, you know, we had 30 synchronized skating teams here, from all over the country, California, Florida, 30 synchronized skating teams, a week and a half ago. And they were, you know, if you put even 10 or 12 skaters on a team, you know, you're talking a lot of hotel rooms. They were here from Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, rented our facility. And I know where they were very happy with it, for the most part. So congratulations to the group there. And then Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday, you know, a year ago, those three nights would have been taken by the state basketball tournament, or at least, what, two years ago, I guess? And we finally, we lost it. But, you know, the Rivermen picked it up. We had over 2,300 people here on Friday. I say "we," the Rivermen, 2,300 on Friday night, over 4,300 on Saturday night. My guess would be pretty... And I see a lot of games, about 2,000 on Sunday afternoon, what I call the family day game, and kids really enjoyed it and took some nice pictures of families that were having a good time. So roughly about 8,600 people in the three days that we used, that the ice was used, the ice plant needed down the road to continue to do that. So thank you for that, for your vote tonight, and looking forward to all the efforts that have gone into make this a very fruitful thing for all of us people in the city of Peoria. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor, we are now at adjournment to exact session. I would like to invite a motion to adjourn and to convene in closed session immediately following adjournment of the city council meeting pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5ILCS 120/2C1, to discuss the performance of a specific employee pursuant to Open Meetings Act 5ILS 120/2C11, to discuss pending litigation and pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5ILCS 120/2C21, for approval by the body of closed-session minutes and the semi-annual review of closed-session minutes. Moved by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Please pass your ballots. Councilmember Sears? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your service.